Call the Osseo City Council regular meeting to order here on Monday, February 24th at 7:02 PM. Roll call, looks like we're missing Councilmember Holstrom this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice.
All right, thank you. We look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I-
I-
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number five, consent agenda. Any questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, next is matters on the floor. Any wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address and address the council and mayor you wish. Generally not attempt to answer your questions, but we'll consider those at future meetings. Is there any matters on the floor?
How's it going? Just a couple of things. I wish we would have on the consent agenda, five E, probably remove that because of 10G. We don't know what may happen there. Nobody discussed anything about that. Is that quasae now? All right. Just remember that when you discuss 10G in closed session, this will be the fourth time that he has gone in front of HR. The second time within 365 days. Just remember that. Also, Resolution Three of 2025. I believe as of the first of the year, I believe the same resolution for 2024. But as the first of the year, I believe that Lieutenant Todd Kinsey and Lee should have been taking, partaking in the investigation, the internal affairs investigation for the resolution of 2025. Unfortunately, I cannot find that because for some reason we can't view the video. All we do is see the minutes for last year. And we know that the minutes are not accurate. They're a synopsis, which is fine. So I don't know if you violated that resolution or not, but I would kindly ask you to look into it. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other matters on the floor? Third time matters on the floor? All right, now close. Seven, special business. No special business this evening. Or eight, public hearings. No public hearings in front of us. Number nine, old business. No old business. Number 10, new business. 10A, rental program update. Rum River Consultants, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Carrie Lovitzky. I'm with Rum River Consultants. We administer your rental licensing program. With me this evening, I have Andy Schrader. He is our chief building official and owner of Rum River Consultants. And also Carissa Krantz is our community development lead. So we're here tonight for our annual report. I know there's some new faces and, oh, thank you. We've got some new faces, it looks like, and some familiar ones as well. So we've, this is our third year with administering your rental licensing program. So this is the third time that we've had the opportunity to do our annual report. And I'll just walk through some statistics and where we've been and where we're going and also can answer any questions that you all have as well. This is our rental licensing program team, myself. I am the program administrator. Our lead, Carissa, which I've introduced you to. Kylie and Brad are not here tonight. Kylie is our admin support. And Brad is the familiar face that your residents know and have gotten to know the last year, a couple of years. So he does a great job. Oop. Okay. I'm gonna look at mine because that's a little far away. So I just wanted to give a brief overview because I know there is some new faces on the council as far as what is a rental licensing program. And in its most simplest form, it's a regulatory framework for rental properties. So when you own rental property, you get a license to operate, very similar to a business. And then inspections are performed and you need to meet the city code regulations, which you have adopted as a body, the International Property Maintenance Code. And in Osseo, we have a biennial cycle. So it's basically annual payment that's made and then every other year inspection. So we've got a cycle A and a cycle B. And we'll get into those details in a little bit. But it does ensure that rental properties do meet the minimum safety standards, which the city council has adopted into the city code. And our inspections ensure compliance with those local codes as well. And as I mentioned, it is a business license. And why does it matter? It does create accountability for property owners. We've all heard the term slumlord and we want to keep those out of Osseo. Typically, when someone is looking at property to invest in, in a rental property, and they know that that community does have a good rental licensing program and they are just looking to collect a check, they'll move on to the next community. You want to ensure that you have that minimum health, life, safety, and that those properties are kept by the property owner. Also, it does create accountability for tenants and by way of property maintenance. You have people that own property. It's their livelihood. It's an investment. And if you've ever heard of what it takes to go through an eviction process, it's extremely long and very cumbersome. With an active rental licensing program, usually the judge will look for documentation from the city or the city's representative, by meaning us as Rum River Consultants, to show that there is a trend, that that person that is living in that property is not keeping it up and in some cases, actually destroying it. So it helps property owners as well. It does protect landlords, tenants, and the community, as I mentioned, about those health, life, safety codes, and it also maintains property values within your community. Some statistics. In 2024, you had 605 rental units and 75 buildings. And that breaks down to 36 single-family dwelling units, 16 duplex units, nine triplex units, 542 multifamily, and two mixed use. And what I mean by mixed use is typically that's commercial on the bottom and then an apartment on top. Those are in the downtown area here. As I mentioned, there are two cycles in Osseo, a cycle A and a cycle B. And that breaks down as far as from inspections. We had in cycle A, 92 units. And that is broken down there by 37 multifamily, 31 single-family, nine triplex, 14 duplex, and then one mixed use. And then moving on to cycle B, as you can see, there's a lot more multifamily, 505 units, and five single-family, two duplex, and one mixed use. And just for history purposes, during the COVID years, the rental licensing program was put on pause. At that time, there was a lot of people apprehensive to let people into their homes due to the pandemic. And when the city of Osseo wanted to, you know, the licensing program back into action, the inspector at the time was retiring and no longer offering those services. So the city of Osseo went out for that proposal request and then Rum River Consultants was awarded that. And again, that was about three, four years ago. This is our third full cycle. And when we did that, we didn't want to, we wanted to come in and see how things were going as far as how many units each year we inspect. And at the time, it was sort of, one year was all multifamily and then the next year was pretty much all single-family and duplex, triplex. And so that's why you see a real heavy number within cycle B for multifamily. Some trends that we see quite a bit in the broad season of the field. Some common violations, electrical, outlet splitters, multi-plug adapters, daisy chain power strips, extension flexible cords being used as permanent wiring. You know, electrical is one of the most common fire starters in homes. And when you have those daisy chains happening, it definitely creates fire hazards. So that's a very common violation. We also see quite a bit of ingress egress issues. So inoperable windows, that's a really big issue. Fire trying to get in. Fire, the fire department trying to get in to rescue someone or someone trying to get out if there's a fire, along with some blocked accesses, heavy content, I think we're familiar with. And when, when people have a large amount of content within their homes and they're blocking that access, the ease of getting out of a structure in a structure fire or EMS and fire coming in to save residents as well. If they're having to manipulate over a lot of those obstructions, it is quite difficult. Some other, couple other things that we do see quite a bit in the field as far as for common violations would be fire and CO alarms, either they're missing, they're malfunctioning, or expired. We like to do a lot of educating and it's about every 10 years. There actually is expiration dates on fire, on your smoke and fire alarms in your homes. And so we'll do a lot of educating while Brad is out in the field performing those inspections. Some of our enforcement efforts that we do is we will send out, along with the renewal, is a pre-inspection checklist. It prepares the property owner for the inspection, saying here, here are the things to be prepared for. Here are the things that are common violations. And then it just prepares them a little bit better for that inspection. Another thing that we do is really, part of the foundation of Rum River is, and where Mr. Schrader founded the company, is on education. And so our inspectors, when they're out in the field, they do a lot of education. And we do that by way of handouts, resources. You know, there are some situations unfortunately where, you know, we'll come across vulnerable adults in some, you know, not optimal situations. So we want to provide those resources for your residents so that they know who to call. Sometimes we do get calls from the county's public health and human services. If there's a property that they're dealing with and there is vulnerable adults, they'll work with us on, on trying to get a resolution for the situation. As far as the corrections, we don't like to go in with a real heavy hand. We have to deal with imminent health, life, safety threats. But we also know that there is some quality of life cosmetic things that is in the code that we can note for the next cycle. We're in there every two years. And the last thing we want to do is give them a whole laundry list of items that are just, you know, paint this crack in the wall and things like that. But I do want to, again, reiterate, when there is that imminent health, life, safety threat, that is a correction that must be made. But again, if it doesn't impact quality of life and, you know, Brad does a great job when he's out there, again, having conversations with the tenants, property owners, on, you know, he'll ask questions, how are things going? Do you have any concerns? And that allows that engagement and communication between him and the property owner and tenant as well. This is an example. On the right side is the, just the first page of that pre-inspection checklist that we provide to all licensed applicants. And then on the left is just an example of a handout that Brad will give when he sees these more common violations to try and, again, educate and inform residents and property owners on the do's and don'ts of certain more common violations. We have them for the electrical. We have them for smoke alarms, CO, and other items as well. So our staff does a really great job of simplifying code language. If that's, if that's the right way to put it. You know, if you ever have opened up a code book and started reading it, you could actually probably fall asleep to it. It's quite, quite boring. But we want to summarize and hit those real high-level items that they'll easily understand. Moving forward into 2025, we've met with staff. We have some new faces at, at Osseo. So we've had the opportunity to get to know Ms. Vickerman and along with others that are newer in their positions. And just talked over what, you know, we like to make that connection each year. What are some of the things that you're hearing? And then, again, they also like to hear from us, suggestions for improvements as well, staff does. So one of the things that we had looked towards is balancing out those cycles. You saw that really heavy multifamily and then there was only like 92 units versus 500 and something. So that's a really big balance, but it does take a shorter amount of time to perform an inspection on a one-bedroom apartment versus a four-bedroom home. But we still needed to balance that out. So Kylie and Brad and Carissa took quite a bit of time of looking at every single property. And because Brad's been out there now at least twice, he knows which properties that could probably go one more year without that inspection or those that can't. And we worked with Chain on balancing out those cycles, which is good for us. It's good for the residents. It's just better service. The other thing that we do every year, and I don't think I brought this up in the past, is we utilize GIS. So the county has portals that we're able to access. And we get a dump from them of all the properties within the community of Osseo. All the homesteaded, non-homesteaded, and we cross-reference that with the current rentals. And what that does is instead of sending out mailings, and unfortunately, property owners aren't the best at notifying the city when they do move or sell a property owner might sell a rental property and then that turns over into a owner-occupied home. And so what we'll do is we'll take that information and cross-reference the current non-homestead against the new, the new data that we get from the county. And we're able to clean up a lot of those files. We do send letters as well to potential rentals, some new ones that come online that maybe just didn't know. You don't know, you don't know. And so we, again, trying to educate. And we'll say, hey, it's possible. Did you know that there was a rental licensing program in Osseo? And then we walk those applicants through the steps to get that property properly licensed. Did you have a question, Councilmember Schultz?
I think you answered it because that was one of the, one of the things that was kind of missing prior to you coming here is that we didn't really have a way to interface with the county to determine when these properties were moving. And so to your point, I know that there's been several non-licensed rental units over time here. So it's very encouraging to me that you guys are doing that on a recurring basis to verify that we're not, and I don't want to say missing out on rental licensing opportunities, but to your point, this whole program is designed to not only protect the people that are renting, but also the tenants. So having that cross-check is important. How often do you log in and cross-reference that data?
We do it proactively on an annual basis.
Okay.
And then if, if there is, you know, staff might get a utility bill change out. And sometimes we'll get an email saying, hey, just, you know, this one's no longer going to be a rental. So we'll get that through there. But we do a thorough every single property every year.
And we have that policy in place within the city. When utility bills change, that's automatically flagged to you guys to cross-reference that, right?
It's, I don't know how, what that internal process looks like. In the past couple of years, we have received emails from staff saying this is no longer a rental and then we'll update our records accordingly.
Thank you.
But we do that proactive once a year.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Technology is a wonderful thing, just like getting that information from the county with the GIS. And one of the improvements for 2025, and again, thank you to staff for allowing us to bring in our proprietary software called Baseline. We believe that technology is the wave of the future. I said that about 20 years ago and now it's, it's, it's so beyond that. But we do, Rum River Consulting does have proprietary software. It has been excellent. We have it in 21 of our jurisdictions where we're the designated building official. And it started with permits and it now has expanded. And we have modules in rental licensing and code compliance as well. So Baseline is currently being utilized in Osseo for the very first time this year. I've got some screenshots up. It's basically a modern web-based platform designed to help communities manage their community development departments by providing tools for permits, rental licensing, code compliance, and more. And it is cloud-based, so it doesn't take up any server space. But it is, like I said, I think, I can't remember how many permits have been run through it, thousands and thousands and thousands in the last few years here. And we're very, very pleased to introduce the rental licensing module as well. So at that first page, you can see when applicants come on to the homepage, they have, they can select either building, apply for a building permit or apply for a rental license. And then again, it, it's just so intuitive. They can, if, when they plug in their address, they can take, if they see the, the point is in the wrong location, they can move that to the correct one. And it's just, it's very user-friendly. And it allows, again, property owners and managers to apply for their rental license online. They can track the status of their application. They can make their payments. They can view their inspection results real time. They don't have to wait anymore for a follow-up email when the inspector gets back to the office and goes through all of those inspections. They can see that happen in real time, right on the spot. They really appreciate that. It gives them access to all of their issued rental license certificates. So, you know, we'll get, we'll get follow-up where the city will get follow-up emails saying, ah, I misplaced that and I know I'm supposed to put it in the lobby of the apartment building. How can I get another copy? They can go on and just download it right off, right off the, off of Baseline. It also provides staff. So we, while the, we have a shared drive that we have been utilizing the past few years, this is just so much more user-friendly than trying to navigate through a drive, so to speak, and find the information that you're looking for. Where now, if staff is questioned on a rental property, they can go right into the software and look that information up. And again, they, they can see that entire intake stage as, as we're moving through that process with the rental licenses. And then again, the benefits of using Baseline. It's a streamlined process for rental property owners, providing them with online tools to apply, pay, and track their rental licensing. And again, city staff benefits from, you know, 24/7 access to monitor the progress of all licensing. So for instance, I think there's been a situation, was it last winter, I think, where there was, there was a, there was a big water issue going on. No hot water, if I remember correctly. And by this software, it allows anyone that staff allows into there to look up that information, who the property owner is, who the tenant is on rental property. And it would be the same for, you know, building permits as well. That way, it gets them that information. Again, you know, I like to call building and, you know, housing, we're the first preventers. So what we do makes law enforcement, EMS, fire, what makes their job easier. And so the more intuitive, user-friendly, the more we can get on technology, it really allows them to look up that information as well and is very helpful. So again, this is just a screenshot of what the, you know, the first page, so to speak, is on there. It shows the number of buildings, the number of units, how many parking spaces, which cycle it's on. And then again, all of those contact details, phone number, email, cellphone numbers, whatever information we have is, is available. So that's the really big improvement for this year. And we're very grateful to be able to have that available to the city of Osseo and to the property owners because they appreciate it as well. The first couple of years, I was taking a lot of feedback and phone calls on, do I have to fill out this application again? It's the same thing. And then we'd say, no, we'll send it to you. Just go and initial the top and we'll move on. This is a way for them, it's all retained. They don't have to fill anything out again. They just change what's different from year to year. So they really, I'm sure we'll get, I'm hoping we'll get positive feedback on it. And that's it as far. I wanted to keep this, again, short and sweet. Thank you again for allowing us. And again, Baseline, that's included with our contract. That's not an additional cost. We get that. Osseo gets that software as a, an advantage to going through Rum River for administration of your rental licensing program. And we're here if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just wanted to let the council know too that we're working on integrating that with our website. So that our new website that'll be coming out, we're hoping by the end of March, we're, we're integrating all of this into that so it can be accessed from that too. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, 10B, discussed expanding permitting building official service with Rum River Consultants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's get this stuff back up here. All right. So as you can see, staff has been spending a good amount of time learning this Baseline software. We've been going through some training to learn how to apply that in the rental licensing program. And over the course of those conversations and, and knowing that Rum River does offer more services than what we're currently using, we wanted to explore the idea of expanding our services and possibly using them as the full-service designated building official. They were kind enough to provide some referrals to other cities that use those services for both licensing program and the rental licensing program and for building inspections and, and as the designated building official. And they had some really positive feedback I, I got from a lot of places was that they went through their existing building codes and were able to really straighten a lot of those things out, kind of like they said, make them understandable. And also that many of their residents or anyone building in their communities had noticed a lot more of a focus on education, on why, why codes are the way they are. And just having a really deep and developed sense of expertise around the construction industry is, is kind of what, what we're gathering. And again, as part of my role coming in and trying to look at ways that we can optimize some of our staff time and use better systems, looking at the Baseline software and knowing that right now, the process we have is cumbersome, multi-step, multi-day. You have to remember to go back and check on something a couple of days later. And also there's the payment piece, which we, the way payments are processed currently isn't the most secure way to be, to be taking payments for these things. So the Baseline software really checks a lot of those boxes for staff as far as efficiency and, and just kind of closing the gap on some of those questions or things that could be missed. So I went through, sorry, pretty, pretty long memo on my part here tonight, but tried to come up with as much as I could without being able to really compare apples to apples. There, there isn't really another vendor that, that provides the service exactly. We currently have our inspections through Metro West. And while, you know, they're, they're perfectly willing to look into things, it's just not, they don't offer the same service and they don't come with software. So the, the software piece technically is available through Tyler. But what we would need to do then is kind of go back to the drawing board. But what we would need to do then is kind of go back to the drawing board and try to finally make that connection and get a increased level of service through Tyler where we could then build this program on our own. And then the other side of that is, is going with someone who has already built a process that we will be using for rental licensing. Is it perhaps a good idea to do that for, for our building inspections as well? There is an increased amount of the inspection fees that would go through the vendor than currently what we're paying, but then again, it comes with software and additional service. Also, one of the, one of the suggestions that Rum River gave is that if, if we were to want to move forward with using these services, they would go through our fee schedule and really just create a comprehensive list of changes that they could propose to our fee schedules, that would put those in line with other cities' common practices, making sure that, again, kind of comparing apples to apples again, is it one house with some windows or a full apartment building doing all of their windows? There's, there's a different, difference in how those fees should be applied. So they would give us a really comprehensive breakdown of those, as well as, like I said, offering some services around cleaning up our code, which I know we've all, we've all talked about. So this memo item is really just to bring it to your attention and to open up some conversation to see what, how deep into researching this is the city council interested in. Is this something we should continue to pursue? Do you have questions? And I'll open it up to you.
Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor? I mean, though, obviously, everything sounds great. I, you know, I've, I've done a building permit in this town when I built my deck and gone through Metro West, and it was not the most easy process to go through, and it was cumbersome. And so this is obviously for efficiency purposes, this is sounds, this sounds great. The budgetary pessimist in me looks at, you know, the difference between paying a company 32% and 80% is a huge difference. And so, you know, that's the concerning part, you know, just as we move forward in a time where, you know, we've talked about trying to be fiscally responsible for our constituents and these types of things. You know, I, I think more discussions obviously have to be made in that area, and I understand some of the stuff that comes with it. And, you know, I read the, the thing in here that says, these services come at a higher cost, would be offset by the staff time savings, which I, I understand the time savings aspect of it, but it, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the people that are doing this work for our city are salaried employees right now. Anyhow, they're not hourly employees, correct? So.
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I can answer that. Mr. Mayor, is that okay?
Yep.
Currently, all the permits are approved through our front office desk, and that's an hourly employee. And there's some issues with taking payment also, where there are things written down that probably shouldn't be, and we're kind of looking at that. Also, a total rehab on our permits and fees and the fee schedule could make up quite a bit of that. I have no idea where we stand currently as far as city to city, because I don't think that's ever been done.
Yeah. And I'm not, and I, I want to be very, very clear. I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm, I'm active, if anything, I would say on the surface, I would, I would be very much for it. I just have to be able to know how, how to justify, because that's the numbers that are going to be seen, is the 80% and the 32%. And those are, those are, those are going to be big red flags for people. And so how do we justify that? How do we talk about that? How do we, how do we say, well, here, this is what we're, this is what this actually means? And so that, that's the only thing I'm saying. But other than that, I, I mean, a lot of this seems to make a lot of sense in going with our, you know, and the fact that we're already using this company for rental licensing, and obviously, we're already then using the software for rental licensing, seems to make, I mean, it makes some sense.
Mr. Mayor? Just as a, kind of an industry standard, we see this with our electrical inspector, too, is 80%. Our rental licensing has been 80%, I think, since Rum River has been with us. So I don't think this is, with that 32%, you get maybe a phone call and somebody will show up, like you said, a kind of a cumbersome system. That's, and, and we're also looking at, if we do this move, the one big thing is we would be able to get rid of some of the Tyler expense of a module that's been sitting there for quite some time that's never been built out, because we really didn't know what, what we had. And that's something we've been dealing with now, because in the past, that just wasn't built. And so we're working through that right now with Tyler, but that would also be a savings. Now, can I match dollar for dollar? No. But I don't think, as far as industry standard, as I've been looking around, it's pretty much that number, no matter where you go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
My thoughts almost echo Councilmember Cook's. That was kind of the first thing I thought of was, okay, if it saves time, I'm not going to disagree with that. You guys are in a better position to know that than I am. I guess I would just like to see a little bit more data around that. Because, again, tacitly, I think, you know, I just saw the presentation, I remember seeing a presentation last year, and I kind of like, if we can get all our eggs in one basket with, you know, regulatory and with the rental and the licensing and getting these data points, I think there's a lot of value in that. Understanding that 80% might be the industry standard doesn't mean that, you know, I circled the word proposed in the packet here. Let's see if we can talk a little bit. Does it have to be 80% right off the bat? Can it be something a little less as we integrate and go into that program with this change? Is, you know, is there a possibility there could be some incentives to help guide us into making this change? But I think as long as the numbers prove themselves out, I think ultimately, right, that's, everybody up here is going to think that's what makes the difference. I think there's an economy of scale that can be looked at. But I guess for me personally, I would just kind of like to see kind of if it is going to be the higher expense, if it's going to be offset by time savings, just some data points around that. Nothing, they'll do any special projects or anything like that, just kind of basic, well, yeah, we're going to be able to free up this much time. And obviously, if we have free up time, we have a lot of things coming up where getting staff time reclaimed could be very helpful. So this is my initial thoughts on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I could speak to a couple of those things. I've been, I've been trying to gather as much as that, of that as I can, and just kind of some rough estimates and talking to people and about how much time they think they're generally spending on these things. You know, I got a busy season, half of my time is spent on this, and not so much, maybe more like 30% in the middle of the winter. And that's with the process running as it is right now, that's without putting any real work into making it better. That's just kind of getting by numbers right now. And then the other thing I'll mention is that, you know, we, we do expect to have some pretty high volume coming up here in the next couple of years. So that's, that's one of those things that we're trying to figure out how that can be managed, which software would help.
Oh, that's helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So I pulled several building permits through my 20-plus years living here, and it's a very cumbersome process. The things that really stick out to me are a couple fold. Number one, the ability to apply for these building permits online and be verified online. If you've got your contractor coming to the city to do this stuff, I mean, they're gonna, it's just going to drive up the expense of their time on your project. So it's going to cost the resident more money on that part of it. The software solution to cut down on errors and just kind of different things that is going to be in there, because right now, it's a very paper process. So, you know, going through that, I don't think that there's a, would be a move away from, you know, the residents that are going to come in and apply for, you know, some of the different permits that are required, you know, like replacing a water heater and that kind of stuff. I don't think that that, if they want to come into the city and talk about that, I think the city would still be more than willing to have those upfront things. But specifically, some of the larger projects that are going on, it would be much easier and potentially less expensive on the project side to be able to have this online solution. Regarding staff time, I totally get where you're coming from with that. The thing about it is, is that if we can find opportunities as we evolve to decrease staff time in one area, that staff time that can be put into other areas so that we can be still, continue to increase our efficiency of work and operations, I think this is a really positive step in that respect. You know, to some of the comments from before, I mean, really, there's not a lot of independent building inspector services out there. I mean, before I heard about this, I can probably talk about maybe 10 cities that I'm familiar with that have to use Metro West, and we're all looking for some type of a technological change to do that. So I was really excited when I heard this was coming to market today, because I think that's going to help a lot of people out. But, and then regarding the, the revenue part of it, sure, I can see where that's a concern. That's something that, once we get through this first phase, we can adjust, we can address budgetarily, we can adjust it through some of the fees and stuff that are coming. And looking at the overt number here that we're talking about for 2025, some of the projects that are coming up are going to be significant. And so I don't think we're going to see an initial hard impact to our budget for this particular cycle. There's also somewhat to Assistant City Administrator Vickerman's point, there's some big stuff that's coming up. And so it really is on us to get this moving, because if we don't take action in a relatively expeditious manner, it's going to put some of these big projects in, in jeopardy regarding them getting the things that they need to get done, their timelines, different things like that. So I'm definitely in favor of, you know, making sure that everybody's questions and concerns are addressed. And me personally, I don't see that there's a tangible reason for all the different pieces of this puzzle that we've pulled together not to go in this direction. Specifically, really on the data entry and the data acquisition, the data retention part of it, it's going to be really huge. And not to have this paper trail moving here, there. I mean, if you've ever, I mean, I don't know about any of you, but if you've ever tried to talk to Metro West, it's not a real easy thing to accomplish. So again, that's, that's a, that's a drain on the people that are using the services, time, and different things there. So I think that trying to figure out ways to streamline this process make a tremendous amount of sense to us, not to push people to make decisions rashly, but this is something that we really do need to do, because, I mean, the big projects that we're talking about primarily is the school. That's going to be a huge one. And if we don't, if we don't get our ducks in a row on this, it's going to really mess up their process, not to mention the fact, you know, if we do decide to go this direction, they went through the processing with Metro West, and then they have to go through the entire thing again with somebody else. And I think that that's a, that's a pertinent negative on this. So if it was up to me, I would, you know, I would advise staff to go ahead with it. But again, that's just my, that's just my perception at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook, that, or Schultz, that is very helpful, knowing some history on this. And, and as I continue to kind of think forward, you know, ultimately, the city, we always kind of talk about how Osseo has one way to grow, and that's grow up. So I foresee in the future, having a process like this could be very, very beneficial, because we're going to be in the future looking at TIF districts, we're going to be looking at different development opportunities. And if we get to be known as a city where contractors know, hey, if we work, if we do this stuff in Osseo, that's a great city to do that in. We know it's going to be easy, it's going to be efficient. If we drive down prices, that makes things more competitive. So I think I've, I've heard tonight a lot of compelling ideas of why this looks good, and I would say that that's where I'm leaning, is I think this is a, this is a good thing. It's a growth opportunity, it's a future opportunity, and that's kind of the lens I'm looking at. We got some good data points as far as, you know, staff, and that's all I was looking for. I wasn't, again, looking for nitty-gritty numbers. It's just if it makes sense, like I said, we've got, we've got a lot of exciting things coming up in the future, and anytime that we can take something off a staff's plate and give it to them so that we get to do something, to me, that's a double win. Now we're doing two things instead of one, and this is a way of doing that. And furthermore, getting us in line with other like communities, I think that's something that's good to look at, right? We should be constantly looking at those opportunities. And if this is something that makes that even that much easier to do, I'm, I'm very in favor of things that are making things much easier to do.
Yeah, just a function of speed and efficiency and, and housing of the data. And then I think there's a little savings on the Tyler side, which would be way more than whatever this difference is, even if you got down to the nitty-gritties, to try to build that component out within the system.
And just one other thing to think about is online payment, which this will help us do. And then be able to, they can pay online their permit fees, all that stuff's going to be taken care of with our new website. So we're working in the background, you know, talking with Tyler, talking with Global Payments, talking with them to make sure that we can make that happen. And I think that's a positive for our city, rather than having to phone in and give a credit card number and then go back and have to run a credit card number. It, it is cumbersome. And like I said, once I found out, we were like, okay, we, we have to invest in some of our future, too. So.
Yeah, I mean, that's a risk reduction, too, right? Less human error. We don't have missing checks, we don't have, not that anybody, not saying anybody would do that intentionally, right? But human error is still human error, and it happens. And again, going back to that efficiency thing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to your point about the human error part of it, I mean, at least this way, if someone's filling this out online, we can trace where those errors happened, rather than I gave you this and we're like, you didn't. But, you know, that, that eliminates that back and forth, that adversarial aspect, it's right here. And if a mistake is made on that part, it's easy to fix as opposed to the he said, she said game. And then also, you know, we did, back, I don't remember how many years ago it was going on, maybe five or six years ago, when we implemented Tyler technology for our city's budget, it's utility billing and other management things, we, we purchased the online aspect of this, but due to staff constraints, we were never really able to implement that. So that's just kind of sitting out there. And if we gave up that to this point, there probably would be some savings there. But again, trying to make it as easy for everybody to interact with as possible, and, you know, the budgetary part, I think that'll, that'll work itself out in the, you know, in the next year or two, and then we can, when it comes time to reevaluate this, you know, looking at the, the adjusted fee schedule, looking at all the different pieces of this puzzle, will allow us to come back in and do that. Because really, when you're talking about building permits and things like that, it's really not technically, and a lot of communities have gotten into trouble about this, where they've turned that process into a money-making venture. And the, the state has been very clear in the fact that that should just basically be a, a cost of time and that kind of stuff, not a money-making thing. So, you know, we may even have to relook at whether we appropriate, maybe this is actually a more legally compliant type of a situation from that perspective, and kind of isolates us from that accusation, that claim. So I just think there's a lot of wins on this. And, you know, if we still have additional questions, I have no problem putting this to come back, again, to get your, everybody's questions answered. But I, I would personally advocate for this coming back in the next meeting that we have to get this, this process rolling as quickly as possible.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm just looking at the, the staff recommendation here is that city council choose to advise city staff to further research options for building permit inspection services and bring to council at a future meeting. If that's what staff is recommending, if that's what we, we should move forward with, you know, I don't have any issues with doing that at the next meeting, you know, but does that give staff enough time to be able to do that? Is it necessary for staff to do that? Is, I guess, maybe the other question. You know, and that, and that would be something that I think, you know, again, I, I don't like, I don't love the idea of moving forward unless we've seen, you know, all of the options and all of the different, you know, that we've put our, we've, we've put our research into it, and we've said, yep, no, this is absolutely the best thing for the city. This sounds like it's the best thing for the city. It really does, based on some of the stuff you've talked about, based on some of the things that, that our Assistant City Administrator and City Administrator have talked about. I guess I'm just inclined to say, well, let's go with what the staff has recommended here, which is to do some further research and bring that back. I'm just, isn't, isn't enough time to be able to do it by the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, what I'll say is, what I've, what I've put together here was, I, I've tried to find as much as I could, kind of anticipating what questions would be asked and, and things like that. But I know also that I'm sure Rum River would be more than happy to come back and give you all a real presentation on all of the services they offer. This was kind of, you know, my synopsis and, and what appealed to me and, and to the rest of the staff as we were going. the staff as we were going through the, the process of learning this software. So I guess the, I, I'm very happy to hear all of the discussion you all have put into it tonight, and I'm, I'm, I'm moving forward with whatever direction you take. But also, I'm, I'm sure they would be glad to come back and give you a very thorough presentation as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I think to the, to the point about time is of the essence, I would also agree with that considering, I mean, I personally, I mean, there's no conflict or anything, but I'm personally doing a home improvement project, so I kind of know in real time a lot of this, like the permitting and all this stuff that's happening. And when I think of time of the essence, we're coming into construction season, so the sooner we can get this going, I think, the better. I guess, for me personally, I guess I would like to see kind of that proposal at the, at the next meeting, and then a real fast follow, you know, maybe at the same time, we can have those options, we can get the presentation. I mean, we got the bulk of the data here in front of us right now. I think, you know, it would behoove us to move within the next couple of council meetings here pretty expeditiously, you know, we can get the, get the presentation, we can kind of make a decision on, you know, what we see from there, and then have something put in front of us pretty quickly to give it a yay or a nay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'm going to be very honest, I don't even know that I need to sit through a presentation, to be perfectly honest. I mean, there, I just sat through a presentation on their licensing agreement. I understand it's going to be very similar, it's going to be, the software is exactly the same, they've told us what that software is going to do. I would be more inclined to be, you know, it's kind of like we sat here a couple of weeks ago and talked about with the computers, you know, I would, I would, I'd kind of like to see a good, better, best sort of a situation, like if this is what Rum River has to offer us, and this is the costs associated with it, but this is all the different things that they can do, you know, here's Metro West, here's what they offer us, here's all the things that they do, you know, da, 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 da. Is there another company out there that does this stuff? You know, I don't know. That would be more beneficial to me, I think, than having these wonderful people spend another Monday night in council chambers presenting on something that they kind of just presented on. And so just, and solely for the sake of, just to be able to, to say that, hey, we did our due diligence, we've looked at, we looked at this across the board, this just seems to make the most sense for our city moving forward, for all the reasons really that have been stated tonight, but at least we can say, hey, we did, we did the research, you know, kind of a thing. And so that, to me, would be more beneficial than another presentation, but I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. City Administrator, do we have a working, I can't remember the calendar, do we have a working session on top of the next council meeting?
No, we don't.
Every other one, right? New guy question?
It's always the fourth, unless there's a fifth Monday.
In March, there is a fifth Monday.
There's, there's a fifth Monday. We have two work sessions, basically.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer everybody's, I think we can have everything ready for you at the next council meeting to make a decision.
Yeah.
We will have that ready.
That would be great.
Cool.
We will have it ready.
Yep.
Yeah, be able to get those cost estimates, and then, you know, Tyler and some of that other stuff that.
We'll have it, well, Tyler's kind of an interesting act, but we will do our best to have everything ready for you, and we will have a decision, or at least a more projected path for you to take at the next council meeting, for sure. And I will be talking with Assistant City Administrator and working together with her to, to get this done for you.
So someone like to make a motion?
I would like, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to advise city staff to further research options for building permit inspection services and to bring back to the council at our next meeting.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to advise staff to research the options and then bring that to the next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Penn C, approve a city hall printer copier agreement.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we had a printer contract with Loffler through the state bid contract on our city hall printer, which came due, and so we went out and started looking at other printer machines as staff. And our current copier fax machine located at city hall is expired. Again, we, we need to do a renewal. We started looking at different services, and we've, in your packet, I believe there was a, an exhibit that Natalie had that came up with the different pricing. She said that, you know, Toshiba does come with the lowest price, but with our IT department, they say that those machines are difficult to work with, or at least that's what they've had within them. Metro Sales is currently working with the Police and Public Works, which, as kind of an overall look into what's been going on, we found that each department kind of had a different contract, and so that would be an easier way for us to get the whole city on one contract. That is, when it's up in two years with Public Works and Police. These are a like-for-like compared to what city hall has now. The Rico, the Metro Sales Rico is very similar to what we're using right now with the Canon. Prices include repairs and service and toner. A monthly savings around $30 compared to what we're paying for our current contract, and this is where Metro Sales came out on top for staff. There's a new lease of a, of a new machine, there are some, as you can see, that are refurbished machines that are a little less expensive. As far as, you can see on the lower right-hand corner, kind of an average color, an average black and white printing that we do, so you can look at what it, what the cost, total cost would be. It's pretty much right in the middle of all those different companies. And we've had really good success, at least within the Police Department, I can say that Metro Sales has always treated us well. And I will be honest with you, we are internally looking at why we're using so much color, and that has come to the forefront, so that's something we are looking at, cutting costs as far as our use.
Black and white dial, black and white.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So I dug through this, and I've had several conversations over the last month or so regarding this particular area. And so when you're looking at it, the night, the thing about this is there's not a lot of difference really behind it. I mean, there's one, there's one here, when you start looking at Loffler, that's the interesting part because, you know, that's a state, that's a state bid price for them, but so is the Metro Sales stuff, and Metro Sales still comes in pretty competitive, specifically on the 60-month lease. Looking through Midwest Imaging Solutions, I mean, they're offering, you know, some, you know, 1,500 color copies per month, and if you look at, this is, I'm referencing specifically page 47 of our packet. Down in the very bottom corner, I appreciate staff pulling together an average color and average monochromatic count for us, which is really, really helpful. When we look at down in the Toshiba area, through talking with different places, Toshiba is, as I've been talked about, is not as high quality of a machine. They often, people will use that to try to get in, but it's, it would be, the analogy that I had is that we're used to, we're used to using Cadillac level equipment, you know, or Lexus level equipment, if you're an import person, and that would be like a Ford Pinto regarding that kind of stuff. So that's, and that's a pretty common thing. So, I mean, I'm really up in the air, you know, because when you start looking at specifically the new equipment, where, you know, like basically 20 bucks a month difference, that could very easily be covered in reducing the amount of color copies. So, I mean, I don't, at its face value, the, the Metro Sales, the Rico, the 60-month lease one, does decrease it in price, it just allows the, so what these leases actually do is, is that you're basically, through that term, paying the full price of what that piece of equipment is. And so if you pull that out longer, then it's, it's, it's going to end up looking like this. So I don't really have, you know, for me, when I'm looking at this, I'm seeing either the, the Kyocera from Midwest Imaging Solutions, or the Rico on the 60-month lease on the Metro Sales side of things. Those are pretty commensurate with each other from where I'm standing, so I, I'll yield to you guys as far as your decision on that.
I, to be perfectly honest, I, if the staff that's using this equipment every day is saying, we've had really, really good success with Metro Sales, that's what we would, as a staff, that's what we would like to go to, I don't think the cost is significantly different one way or the other. If that's what you guys are comfortable with, and that's what you want to do, I would fully support that. I mean, I don't, I don't use the printer, so.
The only negative component that, that I have heard regarding Metro Sales is I know that the, the automatic page counting device at our Public Works Department is no longer working, and Metro Sales isn't repairing it, so our staff needs to physically report that every single month to them so that they know how to do it. So I, I don't know whether that has any bearing on the outcome of this, Police Department has Metro Sales, they have not had any issues with it. So for me, it's either the, the Metro Sales 60 or the Midwest Imaging Solutions 60, either one of them is, is a wash for me.
But the Midwest is refurbished, no, that's a new one, the 60.
And then they, you know, a lot of these places gave some refurbished ones, and I, I don't remember, but I think the refurbished machines were at a, underneath 150,000 page count, so still relatively low use for a, for a machine like this. So I'm pretty sure they just gave that in there to be competitive across the board with it, and would we ever probably burn that up? Doesn't really matter, because if we rent the refurbished machine from them, and that on a 48-month, four years, that would also give us an opportunity maybe to bring all the other contracts in line. But it really, it's, it's totally up to you guys what you want to do, and it would still be the same basic repair and their commitment to us to make that machine work like new. So whatever you guys want to do.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out, I forgot to say, but there's that state contract locked pricing, so we get that pricing for, for 60 months, where the other Midwest Imaging Solutions is not. And so that can, we could maybe negotiate that in a contract, but as of right now, that wasn't state locked at that price. You get that price for the whole length of the term of the contract. I just wanted to point that out.
We have Ricos at the office, and we have no issues, that's who we have, so, you know, we did a similar thing to this, and Metro's been good, so.
Well, I guess if there's no real, there's no real pertinent negatives here, I would just go with the staff recommendation on this one.
The 60-month?
Yeah, wherever that, wherever that is.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, if I may?
Yes.
That we go with, I'd like to make a motion that we go with staff recommendation and look at doing the option with the Rico with Metro Sales for the 60-month lease.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Torres to have staff enter a contract for the 60-month with the Rico with Metro Sales. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See, none, all those approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, do you approve grant writer agreement with J. Murphy Associates?
Mr. Mayor and Council, at the January 24th work session, I was given guidance to investigate the costs related to hiring a grant writer. As I investigated grant writing business, I found that all grant writing specialists want to be paid hourly for their work, you know, and, and one of the things that I learned was that if you do it per grant, they, they may not get funded for quite some time, and they typically don't take a percentage because there are several that do not, we do not win, and so they only want an hourly rate. That was one thing I found. The other thing I did find is it's very hard to find a company. There are individuals that are out there, but a lot of them have different preferences and haven't worked with cities, and so I was really trying to narrow this down the best I could. There are, you know, some help from government sources to write grants on our own, such as League of Minnesota Cities, the State of Minnesota, we could send, you know, staff to grant writing schools, but I'm just not sure that that's a great use of our staff time right now as far as what we all have on our plates. You know, I did find some public entities about grant writing, grant writing, including WSB, but they're fairly straightforward with projects that they see and, and deal with, they can help us. There were a couple other engineering firms that do have grant writers. Again, they're not going to be searching and reviewing and looking for grants, but if there's something that's found kind of in their wheelhouse, that they would assist us, and again, those are hourly. I think the last one we looked at was somewhere between 125 to 175 dollars an hour from the engineering companies. You know, I felt the instructions were to find someone that could do the research in multiple areas to help secure grants for the city. I then looked at the private sector, found there were two ways to go. Again, we could use a company or an individual. It was very difficult to find one individual that could field all of our areas, at least the way that, that I looked at it. You know, I looked at the professional outlet and, and company individual that, you know, worked with the city before, and I found J. Murphy. There was a couple others that I emailed that I didn't get any response. J. Murphy Company automatically right away responded to me, that I think within two or three days, we were on, on a video chat with each other, talking about what the city needs and, and our needs, and I was very impressed. Then they sent, which is also in your packet, kind of some of their background and what they do. And, you know, they not only deal with the public grants, so when we were talking about our water tower, there is some historical society grants, there's two of them, I think Councilmember Cook had looked that up while we were sitting here at our, our work session, but they said, you know, some of that stuff is time-sensitive. It is coming up for this year, if we're going to be doing things with our water tower, it would be nice to move forward. But they also look at private legacy grants, so she, she had talked a lot about Cargill and, you know, Target and some of the bigger companies, the, you know, 500 companies that are out there to help us maybe get some legacy grants, and she's been doing that for quite some time. So this is unbudgeted for this year, so whatever we pay, whatever structure we come up with, if we do decide to move through this grant writing, it is unbudgeted, so we'd be dipping into that monies that we have, is about $20,000 for kind of unforeseen circumstances, so. And there is per, you know, the way I was looking at it is each department has kind of other professional services that we could kind of put some of that budgetary money and use it for these services, depending on where it falls. So it could fall, the Police Department got some grants, or a Fire Department, or Public Works, I mean, there is some areas to buffer that a little bit. So I, I would like, first, if, if this is the way you want to go, that, that would be very helpful, but then how would we like to structure this? You know, is there a minimum on hours or maximum on hours per month? Would you like to do it per project and just have some discussions around that if this is something you're interested in?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So one of the things that I like about this proposal is, is that this is what this company does, and so they're going to have a lot of this stuff in front of them all the time, and as long as we're sharing with them our priorities, they're probably going to make very quick work over saying, yep, this'll work, no, it won't work. Also access into the, the legacy grants and that kind of stuff, I think is, is really, is really good, just knowing that they've got their hands in a lot of different places, you know, specifically with any stuff that we would do with grant writing regarding the water towers, I would imagine that there's probably some ability to move that through that pot of money versus coming out of the general fund expenses. So we probably can allocate these things project-specific as well. So that's probably another to, you know, to, just to address, you know, some of the funding components of this not being something that we had before. I think that there's a lot of ways to make this particular process, because they're a lot easier for us and a lot more cost-effective. Definitely, you know, there's been lots of times that we've sat up here and like, you guys should be looking to grant for this, you should be looking for a grant for this. But if you don't have the people that know how to find the grants, it's a very time-laborious process to do this. So having somebody that's in their wheelhouse, I, I think is definitely an advantage for our community moving ahead.
And it was a two-stage process where they're going to be looking for those, and then there's the actual writing for the grant, which is different.
Yes. So that was where we can cap how many hours they spend researching every month. So my thought process was, this is again, just my thought, is my thought is we would have a, a number that we would spend per month or per project, however you want it to go, but a per-month cap and say, okay, you've got 1,000 bucks, let's say, per month that you can look for grants. Now, they may not do that all the time because obviously it's going to be a little more research-heavy upfront, and then as the year goes on, there's less and less of those grants out there. But then they would come back with a list of grants that are available, and then how much that would cost. I would then be able to hopefully come back to council, which I think is the best way, and say, okay, which ones do you want them to write for?
Yeah.
Based on what projects we're looking at, because really, you know, we're looking at parks, Site Park and Boraboom Park, we're looking Site Park and Boraboom Park, we're looking at water towers, we're looking at facilities, we've had those discussions in the past. I mean, we have a lot of things, streetscape, a lot of areas that we need some help, that grant writing would be very helpful. And so I just think working with them and the way our discussions went online, I was very happy with the outcome.
And I think, too, is just getting in that cycle, and then the longer you're committed to a group like this, then you're in queue more often, so.
Yep.
So when I read through this, I liked the presentation, but there was one thing that I wish I would have seen, and that was when they gave their portfolio at the end, you know, they showed a lot of the stuff that they do, the website stuff and those things. And what I didn't see, unless I'm missing it, I didn't see an example of like something, some grant that they wrote for some particular project. That would have been nice to see, and that's not to say that they're not any good, or, you know, I have no opinion either way at this point, but seeing just some examples of that would be helpful, especially considering that we're a municipality and there's going to be some special nuances, you know, it's going to be different than trying to get a grant for a college or some other nonprofit organization. You know, we have, there's some unique things that happen with grants with municipalities, and one of them being time of the essence, right? Because there's a lot of grants, we have, there's a lot of deadlines and so forth, and again, it's not to say that they can or can't do it. I would just like to know a little more about their experience with this particular type of grant writing. And at first blush, I'm hoping that they can provide that, because all other things being said, I really liked what I saw in the presentation, the credentials that they had. They got a really nice process here for their grant writing timeline. So yeah, that's, that's where, that's one thing that I guess I would like to see, if possible, is just some more examples of it, or at least where I can go look at their examples, you know, even if it's a link or something.
Mr. Mayor? So one of the things that caught my attention kind of along our conversation here is on page 67 of our packet, the different billing options, getting some more, getting some additional insight specifically on, let's say, the monthly retainer versus specifically to an hourly rate, which is, in this case, is $85 an hour compared to what city administrator shared with us in the 125 to 170. But the monthly retainer, I'd like to get some more information of that, because that would also help us in our budgeting process, like, you know, what is really included in this retainer, which will allow us to really control that aspect of it as well. So I think, you know, again, answering the, answering the call of the community regarding the desire to find more grants, and then additionally, you know, just trying to help our resources go further, I think that this is likely, based on some clarification, a really good way for us to go.
So you're looking for additional information?
I'm not, I'm just, I mean, I'm sure that as part of this process, the city staff is going to look at those ones on page 47, or whatever page that was on, but looking at the, what is, makes more sense for us to go ahead and on those different options, whether it be project-based specific or whatever else, you know, or if, you know, we don't want to do this specific retainer because it's not included, we could just say, okay, you know, we're going to allocate you to $1,000 per month on this, and let us know what that includes. Kind of not dissimilar to the services that we get from the, our attorneys. You know, we pay them a retainer, and there's a lot of stuff that gets covered in the retainer. But figure out what that is, and so I like the proposal, I just, I think, try to kind of encompass what our concerns are here, and tell me if I'm totally mischaracterizing this. It makes sense to look at getting some additional information regarding municipal success on their grant stuff, because they probably just didn't include it here for whatever reason, and then looking at having staff work with them, those different parameters, and say, what makes more sense for us? And then, but again, to the city administrator's point, we're pushing up against zero hour on some of this stuff, so if we don't, I mean, legitimately, like, we're talking about some of these things that we're looking at our month, or March or April, that they need to get these in. And so if we miss that mark, based on our level of indecision, that's going to negatively affect us down the road as well. So, I mean, I'm okay, again, just, you know, giving our concerns back to city staff, asking them to look into it a little bit more, and then bringing it back at a meeting.
Would you have time to bring back those with kind of a final proposal for approval by next meeting?
I have to.
Yeah. Yeah.
No matter what, it's coming back, if that's what you need.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are people comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'd go as far as making a motion to table the action, and then have staff bring back kind of a final resolution for us to look at the next meeting, where we can make a final decision. Or not resolution, but, yeah.
Contracts.
Proposal, contract, contract.
Yeah. So you'd like to make that motion?
Maybe you just did, did you just make the motion?
I did make the motion.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Torres to come back with a final proposal outlining services, what's included, some possible other opportunities or successes they've had with municipalities, and that was seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion on that?
This is a table motion, so no further discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. 10E, approved community service agreement with the Morris Leatherman Company.
So at the last work session, I was tasked with looking at a possible community survey to be conducted here in Ossio. I was able to ask other city administrators around our area of the companies that they've used for their community surveys. I was given the name of the Morris Leatherman Company. I then reached out to Morris Leatherman, and they were able to tell me that they did our last community survey in 2012. So I asked him for some sort of a proposal, and he got back to me with a 40-to-50-question survey, would cost the city around $12,000 to conduct. Our last survey that we did was 106 questions. And, you know, again, this would be, I just, in throwing it out there, it's unbudgeted money that we didn't budget for. So I wasn't sure, when we talked, we talked about, you know, do we want to move forward with something like this, and is that something that we, as a council, whether you'd like staff to move forward with, with some sort of a survey to test where the city, citizens are at?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
This was the one in the packet that I think I struggled with the most. I completely understand where Councilmember Schultz, where your direction was with, you know, why we were talking about the water tower, we need to get some community input, and then that kind of expanded into, well, what else can we learn? And I think those things are very important. Coincidentally, I actually talked to a couple of newly-elected council members at the seminar this last weekend about this very thing, and asked them, have you ever done surveys? And these were, one example is Franklin, similar town size of us, about 3,000 people down on the Iowa border. And the answer wasn't exactly what I expected. I thought he was going to be like, either, yeah, it was really good and it worked for us, or no, you know, it was a complete waste of money. It was, his answer was, if you get the right questions in front of people, you can get a lot of information out that's helpful to make decisions, especially in strategic planning, but if they had it to do again, they wouldn't have done it the way they did going through a company to do it, because they didn't really see a return on investment. They asked the right questions, but at the end of the day, they were like, this is almost something that we could have just gone out. We're a small enough community, we could have just gone out and got a lot of this information ourselves. So I'm just struggling with 12 grand, is it a lot of money? No, yeah, no, it depends. I mean, I compared that to the cost of, what was it, of, I'm looking at, but I've started looking at like bang on the, bang for the buck, what are we going to get? It's 48 bucks basically per call. That's what this boils down to. And I just, I don't know, I don't know if with everything else that we've been talking tonight, and especially with it not being in the budget, is this the right time to do that? What are the questions we're going to ask? How compelling is it? I just would really need to see a good return on investment for spending 12 grand to ask some questions. But again, it's, I understand where it came from, so maybe Councilmember Schultz can talk a little more about that.
Well, I just, you know, it was one of the things that I proposed back in 2012, we were facing a lot of decisions back in that time that we really needed community input upon, and it really helped us formulate our plans. Public safety is a great example. You know, when we did that, we got a really high return rate on this, and so of the, we ended up getting 10%, which is unusually high. And so, you know, when, when the council was struggling, you know, specifically with the water tower issue, it's like, okay, we can ask people, okay? Now, we are all aware of a very realistic thing here, which is the people that are complaining about stuff are very vocal. The people that are agreeing that everything is going great, they just don't want to upset the apple cart, you know, and they're just like, I'm fine, so, you know, whatever. But, you know, so I threw that out there as an option for the council to consider. Now, specifically, I think one of the things we're, would likely be targeting with this, and if we do decide to go with this proposal, we're going to be, have a very active role in setting this up, that's probably a two or three-meeting thing where we're going to be like, let's look at this, let's look at this, and then they're going to crutch and say, ah, you know, what are you looking for? And so to that point, the value is in the questions. You know, the water tower issue specifically, I mean, we lived through that, when it was going through, and same type of thing, the people that were very passionate about that and the historical part of it, were like, no, absolutely don't, don't take the thing down. And I, I think that as Ossio's evolved, I think that the fondness of some of our landmarks and things like that is still at a, at a high rate. So if, I am okay personally, either way with this. You know, you know, we've been plugged in, Dwayne and I have been plugged in, so we kind of have an unfair advantage with you guys trying to consume additional knowledge, because we've done so many things that have worked great, we've done things that have not worked out great, and just learned from those experiences. If, if you guys think it's pertinent to put this together, I'd be all over it. So if, you know, a couple of you came and said, hey, I really want to do this, I'm like, fine, you know, but I, I am ambivalent either way on this particular one. I don't see, at this point in time, I don't see an overwhelming benefit to this, but that's, that's just my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I want to be very careful how I word this, because I think community input is really, really important. I think that us, you know, getting information for our constituents and, you know, helping use that information to help guide us to make the best decisions we possible, we can possible for the public, I think it matters and it's important. That being said, if the last two topics we've talked about, if I had to prioritize one over the other, I would 100% prioritize the grant writing over a community survey. I don't think, in the budget conversations that we had in preparing the 2025 budget, and some of the disagreements and some of the, you know, stuff about, you know, where money was going to be, it was tight, and people were already feeling it. And so to just all of a sudden say, well, yeah, let's have an extra $12,000 here, might not seem like a lot, but I just think right now, if I had to pick one or the other of these two projects, I would 100% support, because let's just say we did $1,000 a month to the grant writing company, that's $12,000. I'd rather spend my $12,000 that way than, than the survey, in my personal opinion. And so I would be, I, I, I'll be very honest, I don't think that I am in favor of supporting this, this effort right now. If you remember correctly, when this came up in the first place, I was very reluctant on surveys, just because I just think they can be really good, they can be completely useless, and then there's a lot in between. And so, so I would say, given our tight resources as we have them right now, if we're going to go one or the other, I would, I would support the grant writing over this.
Mr. Mayor? The other pertinent negative that I have regarding a survey of some sort is, is that if you look at the way that people behave when it comes to receiving phone calls nowadays, I mean, I don't answer numbers that I don't know. They can definitely, I'm sure, leave a message, and someone can choose to call back, so then at that point in time, it's like, what, what's the actual validity of our data? Which, which goes to, which goes the point, so.
Because I'm not in favor of this, so.
Mr. Mayor, so I found my data point that I wrote in here. So I did, similar to what Councilmember Cook did, I compared this to, directly to the grant writing, and that 12 grand constitutes 80 hours of grant writing, and that's a lot of grant writing. So it's, it's, I appreciate the intent of the idea, and it's not to say that that's not something that can be looked at down the road at some point, but I'm, yeah, I'd really like to focus on, let's find the money. I mean, we can even ask better questions once we know what projects we're actually going to be able to do in the future, too, so.
And to your guys' points, I mean, I brought this up because I wanted specifically, I mean, all of us to think about this, and specifically to give you guys an option to get the kind of feedback that, that seemed to be required. So I, I have no hurt feelings anyway about this, I just brought it up as a discussion.
I think there's, in my opinion, I think there's other, are more financially viable ways to get community input, so, in my opinion. So I would like to make a motion to deny the proposal from the Morris Leatherman Company to conduct a community survey.
Yeah, we've got a motion by Councilmember Cook to deny the, the proposal. Is there a second? I'll second that, second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, 10F, approved accounts payable. Questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, to approve this meeting's accounts payable.
Okay, and a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve tonight's accounts payable. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion?
So you know, that was, that was a motion by Torres, not me.
Oh, that's right, yes, sorry.
Sounding the same now.
Yeah, I know.
People confuse us all the time.
So yes, the motion was made by Councilmember Torres, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, 10G, we need a motion to convene the council meeting to a closed session.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We need a motion verbatim from the council memo, please, with the statutory citation.
Okay, where is it?
Can I do it?
Sure, if you can read it.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend moving city council to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 2A2 to discuss the internal affairs data relating to the allegations against Police Chief Shane Mickelson.
Okay, and a motion by Councilmember Cook to convene to the closed session as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We're entering closed session at 8:30 PM. City council is now reconvening at 8:55 PM after our closed session. From that closed session, we have a statement to read. On October 28th, 2024, the city council authorized an investigation related to the allegations against Chief Mickelson by a former CSO employed by the city. The investigation was conducted by the Washington County Sheriff's Department, an independent law enforcement agency. Five allegations of misconduct were investigated. Three of the five allegations were dismissed as not sustained. The other two allegations, the chief was exonerated. The investigation is completed and now closed. With that, moving on to number 11, administrator report.
No report.
Okay, Assistant Administrator Vickerman.
Just a little update on the website. We're hoping to have a new staging site set up, which is just kind of the sample setup from some of the content migration they've been pushing over, but there should be a lot more to look at, at least from the staff perspective, the second half of this week, and we can also start on some training materials that they've sent over for. And we can also start on some training materials that they've sent over for editing and building new pages and, and all of those things. So lots of action happening on that front.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Torres.
I'd like to thank the council for sending me to the League of Minnesota Seminar, the little practice or the little education opportunity for new guy council member. So thank you very much for sending me. It was a really, really informative session, made some really good connections with some municipalities that are similar to us. And have some ongoing conversations with some of those folks, so hopefully can bring some ideas through that. But just wanted to say thanks for sending me. That's it.
We missed attorney teaching. Any report?
That's okay. I have no report.
Okay. Councilmember Cook?
I have no report.
Councilmember Schultz?
No report.
Okay. Moving on, no announcements this evening. Moving on to adjournment.
Post adjourn.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook, non-negotiable. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned at eight fifty-eight. Thank you.